AM, I'd like to welcome everybody to March 4th of 2023, I mean 2024. Work session of the Limestone County Commission. Public comments, before we get started in that, I wanted to say that Ms. Dana Downs reached out to me with a public comment regarding the animal shelter. And I don't have the formal one that she sent me, but I told him she's going to be out of town, so we'll be in the records and we will submit that she has made a request on a public comment on the animal shelter. All right, Ellen, will you have your public comment?
Yes, Rachel Studdard.
How you doing, Rachel? If you don't mind stepping up to the microphone, please.
Hi, good morning. I am with a company called America's Thrift Stores. Some of you may be familiar with our company, and we are in partnership with the Make-A-Wish Foundation of Alabama. And I wanted to come here today to tell you about a program we have partnered, we have partnered with many municipalities, counties, and cities throughout the state of Tennessee, now expanding that into Alabama and really throughout the Southeast, to basically offer a free service to divert textiles like clothing and household items from landfills, which the EPA has now said is the fact, actually, the fastest growing category in landfills is actually clothing of all, of all things. And so it's a free service that we offer, and essentially, it's been very mutually beneficial for everyone involved. And essentially, how it works is we provide the recycling centers, landfills, transfer stations with containers, we have various sizes, large and small, to collect the textiles and household items in, which we service at no cost on a weekly basis, or twice a week, or how often we need to based on volume. And we weigh everything we collect, and we keep track of all the weight, and we are able to send the facility's quarterly diversion report showing how much tonnage or pounds that they have diverted from landfills that quarter, which they're required to report to the state, so they're able to give that reporting to the state, and in some cases have even received grant money for that. So like I said, it's been mutually beneficial in that way. And just as a bonus to all of that, I mentioned we are in a partnership with the Make-A-Wish Foundation of Alabama. Every pound that our company collects in the state of Alabama, a contribution is made to the Make-A-Wish Foundation. That goes to grant wishes for children with critical illnesses right here in Alabama. It does actually go to local children within the state. And so it's, it's, it's an amazing organization, it's kind of a win-win-win for everyone involved. And I just wanted to quickly share also, just for those who may not be very familiar with the Make-A-Wish Foundation, they actually have conducted a wish impact study over the course of several years, and just wanted to quickly share some pretty amazing statistics that came out of that, two, two quick statistics. Actually, after that study was conducted, 95% of pediatric doctors reported that the wish actually improved the patient's emotional and physical well-being, while 75% of doctors stated that a, the wish actually could improve the child's medical outcomes. So pretty amazing there, but as I said, those, that's actually, it is a national organization, but this actually contributes directly to the state level here in children in our state. So I know it's a very new concept. Our company is diverting around 65 million pounds from landfills currently annually, and we have a goal to increase that to 100 million pounds annually by 2028. So that's the way that we're doing that, and as I said, it's really taken off in Tennessee, and I'm happy to answer any questions whenever it's appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel.
Javon Turner.
Mr. Turner? How you doing today, sir?
To those of you who do not know me, I'm Dr. Javon Turner, Sr. I'm the senior pastor at the Gathering Place Worship Center here in Athens, Alabama. We have been in existence for seven years here in your community. And esteemed county commissioners, I stand before you today to address you with a humble plea, to bring forth a plea that resonates deep within the soul of our community. I come before you not just as a pastor, but as a shepherd of hearts seeking silence and redemption in the face of the raging storm that is the opiate crisis in our community. Within the walls of the Gathering Place Worship Center, we have witnessed the suffering of our sister, women who are ensnared by addictions and tormented by mental illness. These women are not just statistics, but they are beloved daughters of this community, yearning for healing and restoration. The prodigal ministries for women is our beacon of hope, our vessel of compassion and transformation. It is a sanctuary where broken spirits find silence, shattered lives find purpose, lost souls find their way back home. And with the grant that has been designated to combat this opiate crisis, we have been entrusted with the divine opportunity to extend a lifeline to these women who are drowning in despair. I beseech you esteemed commissioners, to heed the call of your conscience, to heed the conscience of your call and the whisper of the divineness within you, by supporting the endeavors to establish a haven, a safe haven for these women, you're not merely allocating funds, you are sowing a seed of hope, love, and redemption in the fertile soils of our community. This facility we envision is not just a brick and mortar, it's a sacred place where these wounded women are welcomed, the lost are found, and the broken are made whole. In the tapestry of our community, there exists a glaring void, a lack of sanctuary specifically tailored to the unique needs of women battling addiction and mental illness. By blessing us with your generosity, you will have the power to fulfill this void, to mend the tears in the fabric of our society, to illuminate the path to recovery and renew the precious souls. Let us join hands, I hope that you will do that with me, and stand as guardians of compassion and champions of grace. Let us be instruments of change and the burials of light in the midst of darkness. I implore you in the name of all that is good and just, to open your hearts, to open your hands, and to grant us the means to bring forth the realm of healing and hope for these women of our community. May the spirit of benevolence guide your decision, may the light of empathy illuminate your path, and may the grace of generosity flow through you as you consider this humble plea. Thank you for your unwavering attention to all of you great commissioners, thank you for what you're doing for our community, and may God bless you and may forever keep you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cody Gillum.
How you doing, Mr. Gillum?
Hey, how you doing?
Good and great.
Wanted you to know that there's a reason I'm dressed a little differently than I was last time I was with you, is because today I am here as a funeral professional. I am a licensed funeral director, and on occasion funeral homes have the, well, I wouldn't say the privilege, but they have to host autopsies. And I have been a witness to a few autopsies in my time as a funeral professional. It just so happens that there was one autopsy in which a person had passed away, and they had been a rock quarry worker. And usually, when persons have autopsies and they're embalmed, their capillaries work in such a way that you can even see the embalming fluid going out through their veins through the incisions. It's really an interesting thing to see. But this person, when that person was embalmed, their capillaries didn't work, and so the embalming method didn't take, and we couldn't have an open casket. When the doctor whom I assisted in the autopsy weighed the lungs, he noticed that the lungs were a lot heavier than they're supposed to be. And this person, I know for a fact, was not a smoker, but their lungs looked like they had been smoking. Even working in a rock quarry is very, very dangerous to your health, much less living in a community in which a rock quarry is right across the street. And I'm not a doctor, but I would have a hard time believing that the rock quarry didn't contribute to that person's death. I implore you to do the right thing and pass a resolution in which you're saying that the Limestone County Commission will not purchase gravel from this quarry. That's the right thing to do. If you were to do that, and you were to stop the quarry from making money off of the county and off of the people that are contributing taxes to the county, you would be saying to the people of Bell Mina that you are not only their elected officials, but you're safeguarding their health. And I implore you as a minister and as a funeral worker, to please do that, to please pass such a resolution. Now, I understand that resolution might not be able to be passed during this session because your agenda has already been made, and if it's so that you can, I implore you to do that. But if it's not possible, please, at your next full session, pass a resolution saying you will not purchase gravel from this rock quarry. I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gillum.
Dell Elrod.
How you doing, Mr. Elrod?
Good morning.
Good morning, too.
Kaufman Mobile Home Estates in Elkhart sold a couple of years ago. It's now operated by a real estate developer in Winchester, Tennessee, doing business as Empire Homes Alabama LLC. Since that acquisition, tenants have seen their lot rent increase to more than double. They're now getting charged a sewer fee. The entire park is on septic, the sewer line does not go up there. Now they're seeing increases in water costs. The Limestone County Water and Sewer took all the water out of the tenant's name and placed it under Empire Homes LLC. They are now selling public utilities back to tenants. There is little to no regulation or oversight when this is done. This will leave the door open to abuse, and from what I hear, they're already seeing that. The residents are unable to get any answers from management. Phone calls and texts are not returned. Limestone County Water says this was done because present lines weren't up to code, and they say they also lacked an easement to go up into the park. They did have enough easement to send somebody up there for decades to read the meters and send a bill. They also had about 25 residents on Tillman Mill and County Road, uh, County Road, that are on lines directly to, directly on the county road. The easement argument doesn't hold water here. This would cause somebody to question whether this was solely regulatory, or if it was done at the request of the park owner. And I'm hearing residents are afraid to speak for fear of eviction, and they have nowhere else that they can afford to go. While this may be completely legal, it is most definitely sketchy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, Mr. Elrod.
Charles Miller.
How you doing, Mr. Miller?
Good, thank you. Commissioners, my name is Charles Miller, I'm the policy director at the Alabama Rivers Alliance, and the good folks in Bell Mina actually asked me to come up here and speak to y'all specifically about your, your authority, your legal authority to, you know, prevent that rock quarry from coming into that community right there across the street from its post office. Just as a little introduction, Alabama Rivers Alliance is a statewide network of groups working to protect and restore all of Alabama's water resources. That's how we got involved here. I'm sure you've heard more than a few times that, you know, having a quarry right there that's going to go down into groundwater right next to a creek has the potential to de-water that creek, Limestone Creek in this case. So that's kind of where our initial interest came in, and we've attended several of the community meetings that Reverend Gilliam's been so good to host in his church. And I just kind of want to underscore to y'all that this month is going to be kind of your last chance to have any input on this. I mean, once AIDM issues those air and water permits, the cat's kind of out of the bag. And the way we see it, you do have a very powerful tool that you could use to prevent that quarry from coming into the center of that community, and it's Alabama Code 4542-260. And I'm going to read it in part here for you. So, "The Limestone County Commission may divide any territory at its discretion," so that means don't have to zone the whole county, "into your kind of, and I'm skipping a little bit here, but your typical residential, commercial, those kind of zones, or districts including zones where blasting may be carried out, and you can also set kind of the conditions of blasting." So for example, you could say something like, "No blasting after 10:00 PM, no blasting before 6:00 AM." And so I know that you've heard plenty from the folks in that community about how important their neighborhood is to them, their little downtown area, and the impact that this quarry is going to have there. And I just want to make y'all aware that you do have the power to do something to stop that, to regulate blasting in that area alone, and you don't have to go ahead and pay tens of millions of dollars for a comprehensive zoning plan for the whole county. You can fix the Bell Mina issue in Bell Mina. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Claire Tribble.
How you doing this morning, Claire?
Good.
Doing great. Thank you, ma'am.
I'm here on behalf of Keep Athens Limestone Beautiful for a special appropriation request to assist with the household hazardous waste collection. Generally, we have them in May. I'm requesting 15,000. According to last year's household hazardous waste, that would cover about half of the cost of it. It's hard to put a price on it, it depends on how much and what people bring as to how much it's going to cost. We do have a couple of plans to help offset costs. We're hoping to utilize the used motor oil tank at the Limestone County Recycling to offset some of that cost, and we will also have free electronic recycling at our Earth Day Expo to offset the cost of electronics. We will still have that to take the big, the old Big Back TVs that hold mercury. I attached all of the finances from last year's household hazardous waste. Like I said, it varies from year to year, the cost, it will just be something that is assessed afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. Thank you.
Pat Fisher.
How you doing this morning, ma'am?
I'm here with a plea from the neighbors in the Ridgewood Hills subdivision, District 2. The road that leads into our neighborhood, Lipscomb Road, has been almost completely obliterated by the heavy concrete trucks and construction machinery that's been brought back for building another subdivision further down the road from us. That's the only access we have to our neighborhood is Lipscomb Road. It's been destroyed by not only the equipment, but of course, the ice that we had during the past winter. The potholes get filled, and then the very next day, they're out again. It makes for a rough way to get home and out every morning. We recently had an accident on Lipscomb Road where a concrete truck actually turned over and ran into the utility pole, and the road was blocked for, well, I sat there for about 45 minutes, I think, waiting for the, for the, somebody to come and move, a wrecker to move the truck out of the road. But anyway, that's, there was no emergency vehicles able to get through at that time if we had needed them. Since it's the only road that comes into the neighborhood, we feel that the whole road needs to be redone. There's, there's apparently no base beneath the road that's there now, and they recently brought a milling machine out, but I think that they probably couldn't mill because there was nothing, there was nothing in the base, there was no base there. Mr. Barxell has mentioned that, and he's done a good job in providing information to us, but the main thing is that the road needs to be totally rebuilt and have a proper base put under it, and then the asphalt put on top of it, and maybe it would stay. Just repairing the middle of the road is not going to do us any good because it will come right out again, just like it has in the past. I guess that's all I need to say, but I'm just begging y'all, please, to consider redoing Lipscomb Road in East Limestone County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher.
Jim Knowles.
How you doing, Mr. Knowles?
Good, how are you all doing?
Doing great.
Thanks. My name's Jim Knowles, I'm an attorney representing Mitchell Fraser Farms on the Bell Mina matter. Thank you for hearing me out on this. Thank you for your submission for an attorney general opinion on those local laws that we had questioned, and thank you for continuing to consider this, this matter. You probably know that AIDM actually has a public hearing scheduled on the two permits on Thursday evening at Calhoun Community College. I would welcome any of y'all to come, or all of y'all to come in your individual capacities and speak and share your opinions to AIDM. I know that they will note that, they usually give, in fact, local leaders the opportunity to speak first at these kind of meetings. And along those lines, I would ask that you do indeed put something regarding this quarry on your agenda for the next, for the next commission meeting. I believe that's on the 18th of March, and the public, although the public hearing is on March 7th, the public comment period for AIDM ends on March 22nd. So if you were to consider a resolution opposing the quarry as the county commission, that would still be done in time for that to be submitted as part of the public comment period. And frankly, I think that's what my, that is what my client's asking for, is let's have a vote on this, let's go on record and understand where the commission stands with respect to the Bell Mina quarry. And I'll just say, it's sort of ironic that, as we're sitting here and I'm leafing through the agenda, I see that one of the things you're going to be considering later on today is a grant for improvements to the intersection there at Mooresville Road and Huntsville-Brownsville Road, which will be impacted by, by the quarry traffic. And I hear, you know, what the, what the young lady up there said regarding the need to improve Lipscomb Road, I mean, again, this is the kind of things that quarry traffic is going to be having, the impacts it's going to be having on the community. So please consider this, please weigh in on that. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Knowles.
Elizabeth Stewart.
How you doing, Ms. Stewart?
Good, how are you all doing?
Doing great.
I wanted to come this morning just as kind of a refresher on what's happening with the library. Six months ago is really what started all of this for me. I started to follow the governor's investigation, as you all are aware of, into every local library system in the state of Alabama, and her stated concerns over the possible available sexual content for minors. And so all I did was just read the entirety of the publicly posted library policy for Athens Limestone Public Library, and went to a meeting in October after emailing back and forth with the library director in September, because the stated sexual content policy, as you all are aware of, is that they want a diverse selection of sexual criteria for all ages in the Athens Limestone Library, and there is no criteria for age-specific placement or purchase. So that was always my request, and it's been six months, and there's been nothing done by the library board that represents us. So that just led to a lot of questions, as I watched other local library systems, all joint resolutions of city and counties, change their policies, update them, and do so prior to the legislature meeting in March. I want to thank you all for passing a resolution here in January concerning the urge to, A, abide by publicly posted policy on how the board should be set up, and also to take preventative policy measures on protecting minors. Nobody here has come in and said that this library is full of filth, that has never been my stance. It has always been to put protective policy in place for future generations. Well, we've come to a standstill because I have come to find out via the policy that this county commission has zero representation. None of that is by any of y'all's doing, but that is the current case. So the county is the primary user of this library per the head of the board, and they have no representation, they own half the building, and they give yearly as a large donor to this library. And the city is adamant that they are not giving up a single seat, they are not going to allow representation by the county, and that there is no term limits, even though every public policy posted and/or given to me by the city of Athens says that there are term limits for these board members. So at this point, I'm asking that the county commission take action on your resolution to either say, "We demand our two seats back now," because you have two people that are in a fourth consecutive term in his 13th year chairing this board, and a third consecutive term, or cut the funding off. If the city really wants this to be their library, then they should buy out the county of their 50% of the building. I'm sure it's millions of dollars, they should have to buy it out, and they should have the funding cut from the county, because right now, the county taxpayers are paying for this, and they are not being fairly treated. It's poor government, and I ask you all to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart.
Noah Wall.
How you doing, Noah?
Good, how are you doing?
Doing great.
Do you have any copies of the resolution? Pass them on now.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Mr. Chairman, I have a one-page resolution that I'd like to read. I'm going to try to do it in three minutes, but I would ask if it would be okay if it went just a little bit over.
Go ahead.
All right, my name is Noah Wall, and as you gentlemen know, I'm chairman of the Limestone County Republican Party, and we passed a resolution at our last meeting regarding the FEMA flood plan regulations. And I'd just like to go ahead and read that resolution this morning. Whereas, "The Republican Party platform supports the United States Constitution, which guarantees the rights of the people to not be deprived of life, liberty, and property. Whereas, it also supports the Alabama Constitution in Article 1, Section 35, that the sole object and only legitimate end of government is to protect the citizens in the right of life, liberty, and property. When the government assumes other functions, it is usurpation and oppression. Whereas, FEMA and ADECA are asking the Limestone County Commission to vote and approve their flood plan management ordinance program, which goes against the plain wording of both constitutions by requiring permits on private property." Quote from the proposed FEMA-ADECA ordinance in Article 3, "require permits for all proposed construction or other development." And whereas, "this means permitting for every new construction and improvement regardless of whether the property is in a floodplain or not." Whereas, "the requirement is so broad that permits would be required for almost anything you could consider on your property, grading or graveling a farm road, drilling a well, digging a pond, building a tools or storage shed, hen house, etc." Article 3, Section B, "Development permits shall be made to the floodplan administrator on forms furnished by the community. Prior to any development, any man-made change to improved or unimproved real estate, including but not limited to buildings or other structures, mining, dredging, filling, grading, paving, excavation, drilling operations, or storage of equipment or materials." And whereas, "it requires the county to spy and report upon people using their own private property." In Article 3, Section 2, it says, "Conduct regular inspections of the community's SFHAs for any on-permitted development." And whereas, "if you live in a FEMA floodway, you could be restricted from even being able to build a farm fence." In Article 4, Section C, it says, "Fencing shall be prohibited in floodways." Whereas, "The fines are unreasonably high and unending." Article 2, Section H of the FEMA plan says, "Any person who violates this ordinance or fails to comply with any of its requirements shall upon conviction thereof be fined not more than $500 or imprisoned for not more than 30 days or both. Each day such violation continues, following receipt of the notice of violation shall be considered a separate offense." Whereas, "Demanding law-abiding citizens to request permission and be forced to pay a fee to their government body through a permit system in order to exercise their basic constitutional rights is an unmistakable overreach of government authority. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Limestone County Republican Executive Committee respectfully request our elected officials to oppose and to protect the people's rights from this direct federal and state overreach by voting not to adopt FEMA and ADECA's flood plan management ordinance program approved by the Limestone County Republican Executive Committee this 20th day of February 2024." Committee this twentieth day of February twenty twenty-four."
Thank you, Noah.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Chairman, I believe I might have skipped someone. Al Rainey.
Good morning.
And good morning to all. I am not Al Rainey, but I'm here to lead part of this letter, and I think you all have a copy of it as well.
Yes, ma'am.
I am Denise Harris Stovall. To the Limestone County Commissioners, this letter is written to inform you of the concerns of the rock quarry and the asphalt operation in the town of Bell Minna, as well as the impact it will have on the citizens of Mooresville and the surrounding area. You are being asked to make a decision for the welfare of the citizens who this will be affected by this atrocity. I'm going to skip because I, my three minutes won't be long. Bell Minna is known for, it's really an old-fashioned town. There's been a lot of changes that people, uh, poor parents, had to go through in Bell Minna. We know it was at the time, during the time of the early nineteen hundreds, um, life for minority was difficult. Life was not a bowl of cherries for most people. Bell Minna was surrounded with, by land, and I should say, plantations, that's what it were. There were cotton fields, we had to have corn, soybeans, they were prominent, family survival, they had to have gardens, limestone, fruit trees, all of that was a must. With the, with the consideration of how quaint Bell Minna is during its heyday, there was a lot. We had doctor's offices, there were grocery stores that had furniture stores, there was a train that came that was thirty-six and thirty-five. Also, the post office act as, they had to sell these stamps mailing, but also they purchased tickets to ride the bus. There was a train that took citizens to Decatur, Huntsville, Chattanooga. There were service stations, there were blacks that had service stations. There were, uh, four churches in Bell Minna. They still exist. The only one that's on its present foundation is the oldest church, and that is Bell Minna Methodist Church. It was built in eighteen ninety-five.
Ninety-seven.
Eighteen ninety-seven? Okay, thank you. And it still exists, and it's on its original foundation. Can you imagine the damage a rock quarry will do to Bell Minna's community? And with Mooresville being the oldest, let's let me finish this. If the, Mooresville being the oldest town in the state of Alabama will be shaken off its foundation, you are, please, think about it, what this would do to the community of Bell Minna. And I know, I want you to think about it, would you want this quarry to be in your neighborhood? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
No further comments?
All righty. Well, we appreciate everybody's comment today. We appreciate everybody being here today. And for that, we'll move on. And like I said, if you ever have a public comment, you're more than welcome to email it in to us or get it to us, and we will be taking advisement. Thank you. So today, first thing on the agenda will be minutes from February the twentieth of twenty twenty-four. Anybody got any discussion with the minutes? All right, next thing on there will be the approval of claims in the amount of three million, two hundred and nine, two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-six cents. Anybody got any question with a claim? All right. Any conflicts of interest or anything on the commission body today to be taken up? Everybody's silence, I'll take that as a no. Public hearings, we have none. Resolution orders, we have none. Contracts, agreements, and MOUs and grants. First on here will be to approve a service agreement with the LIOCE group for a copier for the probate judge's office. Anybody got any discussion with that? All right, next on here will be to approve a MOU, I mean, a memorandum of agreement between the town of Mooresville and the Limestone County Commission for work on Mooresville Street. Anybody got any discussion with that? And I think this is dealing with the, where we're going to redo Mooresville.
That's not any actual work, that's just like...
Just an agreement that allowed us to do work, yeah.
Well, it's, it's for, so that they can utilize our in-place bid.
Right.
And we will do this with Art Moore and Elmunt, and everybody else that has anything. Yeah, that's, I think we've been doing something with Lester here in a little while, anyway.
The town within the borders, we do similar agreements with them.
Yeah. Anybody got any discussion with that? All right, number three will be to approve an agreement with the Alabama Emergency Management Agency for a state subwarrant emergency management performance grant, and just be the, for an allocation amount of two thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars, and this will be effective ten, one of twenty-three, and go through nine, thirty of twenty-four. We do this every year, but anybody got any discussion with that? All right, number four will be to approve an agreement with OCV LLC for a mobile app for the Limestone County Sheriff's Office. All costs will be paid for through the Limestone County Sheriff's Office Discretionary Fund. Anybody got any discussion with that? All right, number five will be to approve a CDBG grant agreement pending attorneys' approval, a reviewal between the Appalachian Regional Council, A R C, and the Limestone County for intersections improvements, and this will be located at Mooresville Road and Huntsville Brown Ferry. Drew, you got anything on that?
Uh, no, I, I'll need to take a look at it, though.
All right. Thank you, sir. Budget revisions, we have one budget revision. Being the maintenance department, this is twelve thousand dollars, and what this is for is, this is for a new lawn mower. We trade them out every few years, and they will be selling the other one and buying a new one. So this is just a, just swapping the money for them to buy the new lawn mower. Anybody got any discussion with that? All right, emergency purchases, we have none. Board appointments, we have none. Award of bids and quotes, we have to award the following bids for financing at Bryant Bank, and the interesting quotes here, so it'd be, Bryant Bank has won the ten KW TA eight-eighty dump trucks and the two-pull tractors, and it'd be at four-point-two-nine percent interest, and this is, we finance these every year for the trucks that we sell. And then the other one will be for two T-four-eighty Bryant Bank, this will be solid waste garbage trucks, and this for four-point-seven-nine percent. Anybody got any discussion with either of them?
That should reflect one instead of two.
Well, garbage trucks?
Correct.
Okay, just one, okay, one garbage truck. All right, anybody got any discussion with anything else? And like I said, if everything goes as planned, we will be having new trucks in, others will be going out this, starting this week, yeah, next week, okay. So anybody got any discussion, any further comment? All right, personnel action staffing plan, we have always, you know, traditionally took each one of these up, and then I've got with Drew on this, and if nobody has any objection with anybody, save from voting four times, we'll just take all personnel action up in one motion if nobody has any objection with anybody on there, which we'll go through in a minute. If anybody has any objection, we'll pull them out separately. Um, that way, we don't have to go through the process of voting four times, because this is basically, all right. Number one will be to approve to hire Marcy Ann Phillips as a communications officer, effective three-four of twenty-four, and this will be pending a drug screening. Anybody got any discussion with her, or any dispute? All right, number two will be to, to hire Vadim Shushants as a patrol deputy, effective three-four of twenty-four, pending a drug screening. You don't think I could say that name, did you?
I'll play.
I practiced that one. Vadim Shushants, okay. Anybody got any discussion with him? All right, approve to transfer Robert Moore as, from a deputy sheriff to a sheriff deputy patrol, effective three-four. Anybody got any discussion with him? And number four will be to approve to transfer Kathy Robison, Robertson, from a part-time driver to a full-time driver and council agent, and this will be three-four also. Anybody got any discussion with, or anybody want to pull them out or take them all in motion? Anybody? One motion, everybody's fine, okay. All right, so moving on, merit increases, we have several listed below. Anybody got any issue with any merit increase? All right, engineers report, Mark.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have one edit that I'd like to ask. Holland Hills subdivision is addition two in District Two. This one we need to pull from the agenda. The, based on some comments that we made, they're having to get some feedback from the developers, so they need to wait until the next commission meeting. So we need to remove that one from the, from the agenda. The two remaining subdivisions for your consideration today are Carrow Branch subdivision. This is a minor for preliminary and final, creating four lots in District Four. And then Charleston Phase Two, this is a major for final approval, creating a hundred and seventy lots in District Two.
All right. Anybody got any discussion with these subdivisions? If not, you got anything else, Mark?
Um, just to kind of give you an update, we have been looking at our paving schedule for the next year. We have, probably what we're going to end up having to do is pay a contractor to do most of the patching work, and then leaving us the ability to do, like, strip patching and things to that effect, to try to catch up from all this ice event that we had. So we will try to get a, a good list together in the next couple of weeks with your priorities, because even with that, there's some roads that probably need a little more attention than patching that there's just not going to be enough time to get to. But, um, but I'd like to get with each of you and get your priorities for some of those to, for, that might need to be complete redos, so that we can set that, so we can set that schedule. So, like I said, if, just in the next couple of weeks, if y'all can make some time to sit down with me and Hunter and go over, go over that, so that we can just make sure that we get the priorities on there. And then the remainder of the items, we will try to get, we'll, we'll do strip patching and that type work, just to, to get everything stabilized until we have a better opportunity to come back in and do, and do the remaining repairs.
I know on the north end, we're still showing damage showing up. I mean, you go through one day and it's, looks pretty solid, next day you go through and it's loose, so it's going to show up for a while, so it'll be drawn out, definitely.
Yeah, you're right, and that, that's why I think we probably have to just allot ourselves some time to do the, the strip patching type work, and then we'll, we'll put some projects in there, and then allot ourselves some time for strip patching, and if we, if it goes our way, which lately it hadn't been, weather and everything hadn't gone our way in conditions of road, but if it were to go our way, we might could add a project or so later in the year. But, um, but I, but like I said, I think we're just going to have to give ourselves some room for, to handle the patching. It's got to be done. But, but the mainline paving projects, those kinds of things with patching, we've been looking at what those additional costs would be to have a contractor do it. And so we did get a really good patching price this last year with the bid, so that, that did help us out. But, um, but I mean, it's still going to be a fairly significant cost increase for the projects that we already have slated to, for the contractor to do patching, in our, in, in place of us doing it. So I think of the, the four, five projects that we have currently listed, it'd be almost a half a million dollar increase in costs to have the contractor do it over us. So, um, so like I said, we're, but, but that's, it's cheaper than hiring another paving crew. So, um, so like I said, the weather has been, has not been favorable for us this winter, so we are trying to come up with a, with a good plan.
How's this affecting our projects we've already got inland?
Those, that's what I'm talking about, those. We would have to kind of turn over those to a contractor, everything except for the chip seal, and that, that would, there would be a, a significant cost increase to have a contractor do the work.
So we're still on land?
But we're still on land to do that, yes.
Okay.
I still think we need to get two million for my road fund due to these increased costs.
And like I said, Noah, the biggest thing is, we've got to figure out how much work we can get on first, you know? We've got to get some work done, I'll tell you. All righty. All right. Anybody else, Mark? Anything else saying for Mark?
It's been a bear bad name, so.
Bear bad name. Well, that's all right. All right, um, next thing is other business. We have to sell a few items on Gov. Deals here. Anybody got any discussion with any item on there? And other business, before we recess here, I've got a couple of things. One is, it's the KALB Day. I'm almost positive that it's already budgeted for the year. You need to just get with, um, get with Emily on that, because we all, I think we have set that in the budget every year to help with the hazardous household waste day. But I'm, make check with Emily and make sure on that, or, um, and another thing is, Mr. Crowley, I want you to open that door behind you and wheel in here. We got us a trash can out there, we'll bring it in here. Anyways, while we're waiting on the trash can, um, any other, other business, anybody else?
Well, um, you know, the Limestone County, you know, we have, we have said we was going to do this, so for families that have lost a loved one for the next, if anybody needs this service, just reach out to the county commission or call the solid waste department, and we'll bring you an extra can out, because I, I went through it twice, two or three times this year myself. I know the sheriff's office puts out signs and stuff for the family, but if you see one of these cans on the side of the road, it's a black can, and you know, it's for families who've lost loved ones, um, be in prayer for those families, and I want to thank all the commission body, I came up with this kind of vision, and they all fell right along on this, but, um, so if you need, um, if you need this service, send us a message. Well, a couple of weeks, I know how it is, because you eat off paper plates, you do this, you do that during that time. So with that being said, you know, I have, like I said, I've witnessed it wholeheartedly this year, with the past twelve months, um, I know, and I've got my red tie on for my son, his favorite color was red, today's national sun today, so I'm celebrating the day, and it's the first year I had to celebrate without my son, so if you don't mind, you can wheel that back out. And anybody else got any other business? All right, and so I want to thank everybody for their tie. Oh, wait for me, we've got to go before we adjourn. I do want to do something. I'm going to do this, other business, reason I'm going to do it in other business, I want to do the legislative report in other business, that way if anybody has anything, they want to talk about legislative-wise, we can discuss it here. Which I am the legislative representative for Limestone County, and I will be down this week. I got to go down one day this week to meet with legislators and some things, but some of the bills that the ACCA has had out there, Senate Bill sixty-three, it, um, is for dealing with discretionary funds appropriated directly to a county office by Alabama legislators, and this right here makes that, that fund the legal responsibility of that department and not the county commission, that accountable, that's more accountable for taxpayers, and that way they know where their money's going. So any discretionary funds, I don't care if it's sheriff's office, council agent, something like that, that department is directly responsible for that allocation. And then House Bill one thirty-one, this right here is for the use and the taxpayer's exemption on certain medical equipment, and it allows the local government to plan better for related changes in tax revenue dealing with that bill there, so it'd be taking some tax off some medical equipment stuff. And then that's got to go, that has to go to the Senate now, and then the Senate has approved S. Bill, Senate Bill eighty-one, and this right here is referring to the, the board of registrars, and this right here will be that, you know, the require the board of registrars, which our board of register do a great job on this, I mean, this is not dealing with, but it's statewide, it'll be that they're required to publicize their office hours and to make when their office is open, and it also encourages register appointments to make, to reflect the better diversity of the state when they, when they're considering making appointments, so that'll be for the board of registrars. So anyways, anybody got anything legislative-wise going on that y'all need to carry down? All right, so we will recess for fifteen minutes and be back here in, let's say, ten oh five.